I'll start off as I usually do by asking if there's any particular questions any board member has on either. My comments or any of the financial reports. That I can address.
All right, Rick, here it comes.
Okay. I always count on you, Andrew, to have. Get the ball rolling.
Rick, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Then and and when I read your comments and I looked over things, what I'm seeing is that. We're not having any kind of revenue shortfall fall. We're just having timing issues on when we receive the payments.
I think what you're referring to is the comment about township revenue specifically. And that is absolutely accurate. If you go to the township report, what you'll see. Uh, is actually the, I think, the first week of. March Chocolate provided us three checks. Um, and so actually that was after I gave a call out there and. And found out that what had happened is the longtime treasurer. Of Chocolate Township retired. And so they had a new, they have hired a new treasurer. Uh, and she was getting up to speed, and so that's why we had a delay. So I think, I think the old time, uh, the long time treasurer retired. The end of uh, twenty twenty and then it took him a while to find a replacement. And so, and that was a hundred and nine thousand dollars that came in from. From Chocolate. So that the other thing that I'm pretty confident on is even if we have. A number of tax tribunals, uh, and their. Work to reduce the the value out in Market Township. Um, we're, we're actually under, under budgeted for revenue from the township side. What I looked into and discovered was. The assessed value of Sands Township is. Pretty dramatically increased, so I'm anticipating. Uh, where we got eighty-three thousand from last year, we're already at ninety-three. And I think we'll probably end up about a hundred and three somewhere in that neighborhood. So that that's a, a big chunk, uh. That's a, a nice growth, and I think Chocolate Township will probably has a fairly nice growth to it. And as I say, I, the assessed value of Market Township has gone up, but then you have the tax tribunals of. Of Meyer and um, and Walmart that could take a chunk of that away, so. But as I say, I'm pretty confident that the township revenues is actually under budgeted in this year's. Budget document that you guys approved, so, so that's, that's good news. Overall, our, our revenue actually is down this year, but if in my comments. It's almost exactly offset so far with expense reductions. Uh, I think, uh, let me find my, I highlighted those, I could find them a little easier on mine. Oh, here we go. So, yeah, so revenue's down a hundred and ten thousand. But expenses are down ninety-two thousand, so we've almost completely offset the revenue. Reductions and and the bulk of that is, is tied to the city's situation, so. So that kind of uh, gets you up to speed, I guess, a couple, any other questions before I give you a quick? Little update.
Yeah, Rick, I, it's just Steve and um. Some of these are because I haven't seen these before except last time, and uh, if the, if the answers are longer and it. And other people have heard it all before, I'd be that, I would like to take you up on your offer to come in, so. But a couple, a couple of quick ones, the penal fines, what, um, what are the penal fines from?
So that's actually from traffic, um. Well, any criminal. Activity that actually has a fine component to it. So a, a great example is, is. You know, where you speed and you go into the district court, you write them a check. So that's, so the county collects those and then they allocate them out. Based on libraries, so all of the townships and the city. That participate with the library, uh, we get that portion of those activity, criminal activities, fine activities.
So it's your civic duty to speed.
Yeah, the last, last ticket I got, I, I. Made myself feel better by saying I was contributing to the library.
Yeah, so basically, Steve, as I understand it, it's, it's like, you know, a moving violation that results. Motor vehicle related that results in a fine, and you'll see a spike in that number. Like, um, when road restrictions are put into place. Because a lot of the big offenders are commercial trucks and whatever that are still hauling loads down, right? And so, and it's. It's worth it to them, right? They'll pay six hundred dollars a time to get.
Those are big fines.
Yes, yes, so. The, anyway, you'll just see that curve kind of do this and, and there's some interesting stuff in there, but yeah. I, when I first started, I thought that was all library fines. I was like, oh, my gosh, are these people. Wrong with them? Take your books back.
A couple of things that are, so that, that number is significantly down, um. And part of it is with COVID, you just don't have people out doing activities that create. Criminal with fines. I, I, I believe. The other thing that's impacted this, and this is long term, is I believe. With the legalization of marijuana, that used to be a criminal where you would pay a fine. And I believe those are part of the penal fine system. And so most of that has gone away now, so I think that. Uh, has, has caused the long-term trend of that number to be down, so. So part of it's short-term because of the COVID, and I think part of it's more of a long-time term. Uh, situation. The other, other issue that I, I haven't followed up on is. Is whether the county has someone out. Dedicated to the, the trucking industry. And at sometimes, they actually. Um, feel like they can't fund that position, so, so then that could be another factor that's in there, so.
Two other, just two other quick ones, Rick, I appreciate that explanation. I, I thought the same thing. That's a lot of fines for library books. What are these people checking out and not returning?
Two other really quick ones, and I'm looking at page one of the expenditure, um, revenue expenditure report, they're just, they're just sort of general, but. On the headings there where it's got normal and an abnormal parentheses, is that because if it was negative, it would show in brackets and that would be abnormal?
Uh, that is correct, so, so basically what, well, on the revenue side, I'll quit, so interest and dividends, what. What I build into the budget is, is basically what we know. Is the portfolio would general, generate roughly nine thousand dollars of interest in income. What we don't know is the, the gains or losses that are accruing every month. So right now, we've actually have fifty-two thousand thirty-two dollars that has gone on. And, and most of that is probably ninety percent of it is, is market gains. That can disappear very quickly also. So that's a, that's an item that, that we're basically way ahead on our revenue side of things, by, yeah, forty-three thousand. And then, so that's really the only example up there. Um, Andrew, if you can scroll down, I don't think there's anything on the expense side where we. We've exceeded expenses at this point in time.
Way down at the bottom, yeah, there's not underdone, when you get down to property taxes, there is, but I understand now what, what you're saying about it.
Property tax, so property taxes would be.
Page one, and, and um, it's got under available balance, there's, there's some bracketed amounts, uh, current personal property taxes.
Yeah, so what that represents is that's a small, um, tax tribunal or. Not really, probably the tax tribunal, it's probably the. Um, other, the lower level. Where they go in for tax.
Okay.
Um, reviews and, and so the city decided it was. Over, they were overtaxed, so then there's a payback on that, so that represents a payback, yeah. So that's actually the only, only real property taxes revenue that. That came in, and that's a reduction in, in property tax revenue.
Appreciate that. And the other, uh, just one other question, I appreciate your time on this. Everyone else probably understands, I'm sorry, but on page, back up to page one of the, um, reporting expenditure report. That last line under revenues, that basically, it's a fund balance carried forward, is that? Is that really saying we're going to spend that much of the fund balance to balance the budget this year?
Um, so the, the fund balance carried forward, um, that is, yes, so basically, we are always trying to. Um, we have to create a balanced budget.
Right.
So at this point, what we have built up top is the expectation that fifty-eight thousand five hundred. Of fund balance will be spent.
Okay.
Now, what we have built in the expenditure side is. If you can scroll, well, let's see, let me find it, it is a reserve. So we're anticipating that. Um, potentially, we could have tax tribunals of thirty thousand. Um, so if that doesn't come true, then we would not have to spend. You know, quite as much of the fund balance.
Okay.
So those are a couple of things that are in there is, is.
Okay.
Balance it, but yeah, that, so it's a reserve that we build in, when we know there's potential for. And Duke Life Point still has some potential. Cause I can't get the city to tell me where, where they're at. Yeah, it's Android, it's not because I didn't try here, I tried, tried to get some answers. But they're, they're pretty reluctant to, to do any trends for me, uh. And we'll have specific numbers for you in June on that, so.
Do you need a little assistance, Rick, getting those numbers?
I, maybe, maybe your wife can work some, some miracles, but. I reached out to, um, uh, Miles. The city assessor, and then I thought, well, maybe, maybe the city.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Jen.
What, what can your city do for you, Rick?
Well, it's actually, yeah, so what, what we discussed last board meeting was what, what if anything. I knew on the, on the city tax assessed value for the next tax year. And I, I said I really don't have a clear picture. This year, ours is down by about. Well, probably forty, thirty to forty thousand dollars is what, what our. Revenue is compared to twenty twenty revenue. And so, so I said, I try and find out what the twenty twenty-one looked like, so. But I really didn't have a lot of success, so. I got a, a nice email back.
I know with a couple of. Projects and brownfields and how that was going to be handled. That's probably the delay. I know one of those just got resolved last week. Um, so. Uh, you're probably gonna, and then, and now we're going to get this big infusion, we might be getting two million dollars. From the stimulus bill. So. Which is going to probably put things, well, and we won't know that for thirty days, but. Roughly ninety-nine dollars a person is going to come. To Marquette, so. Maybe, uh, I'm not being very helpful, and I don't want to take up more of your time, but I, um, things have been in flux recently. And so, um. Happy to help in any, to, you know, move things forward, but I know that. We were discussing some brownfield money. Last week and it got resolved in a favorable. In a favorable way.
Okay.
And, um. Um, and now we've got potentially more money. And so. Uh, you know, uh, I was told today by the Michigan Municipal League that we'll know how much money we're getting from the stimulus in thirty days.
Yeah. And, and as I say, whether any of that would be shared with the library, it would be, but it, it's not. Mandated or that it would need to be shared with a lot of.
No, it's, so there's some directed to COVID. There's some directed to water sewer or broadband. And then, do you guys know, uh, Marquette Board of Light and Power is initiated. A study to bring true broadband. Excuse me, through, um. Uh, for the fiber network backbone to the entire, to its entire service territory. So, uh, that process has started and expect results from this, from the study. To look. At costs and scope the technology. In the next six months or so. But yeah, broadband to every single customer.
Wow, that's exciting.
Yeah, I'm very excited, so.
But to get back to our.
So, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hijack the meeting, I just thought, maybe, Rick, I'm going to put Jen's number in the chat for you. And if you have more questions about the hospital, please feel free to call her.
And that's, that's a big one, and I couldn't get it a real clear answer on where it stands, whether it's. Likely to still have reduced assessed value there. I would suspect it will, but how much and how dramatic it is and what the timing is all, all to be determined, so. So anyways, that's pretty much all I wanted to share with the, with the board here, so. Unless there were some further questions, oh, uh, the audit has go, gone in, I did want to mention that, so. It's been submitted, we looked really good, um, so. Couple of things I can share, you'll, you'll have your formal audits to read now by, before next month's board meeting, so. Good reading, good reading, yeah. But anyways, uh, so on the general fund, um. What's official is the net change in the fund balance for, for last year was thirteen thousand three ninety-eight. Um, adding that to the fund balance that we carried into last year, we now have. Uh, six hundred and twenty-one thousand seven seventy-four is our, our fund balance. And a, a big, big portion of that is actually. What the general fund trust holds. So that's pretty much all, all the fund balance, plus there's some in our cash checking too, but.
It's a nice, healthy fund balance.
Yes, it is, so.
Well done, Rick.
And, and then on, on the, uh, let's see, the Library Improvement Debt Service Fund, which is the. Other page in the revenue and expense report that's in there. Uh, that also has a, a healthy fund balance now. That's something that gets massaged through the, through the millage rate for, for that, but right now it has a, a nice fund balance to. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred, so. So if anything, the millage rate could be adjusted down, uh, going forward. For the citizens of the city of Marquette, so. Cause we basically, at the end, can have a fund balance. Is when the bonds are done, so they, they'll try and make sure that that doesn't get too, too big, Gary Simpson and his crew over. Over at the city, so anyways, that, that does it for me, uh, unless there's any other questions on the part of the, the board.
Other questions or comments for Rick?
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. May I have a motion to approve the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
I'll second, Steve.
I'll do, uh, Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote? Is Patrick still with us? Patrick, you're muted.
Uh, yes, it just took me a while, aye.
Thank you. Steve, how do you vote?
Speak.
Steve? That's okay, this is Ann, I also vote aye, so the motion to pay the bills passes four zero. Carol had to leave at six o'clock, so we're, we still have a quorum, but.
Yes.
That was approved by four zero.
Four zero.
Moving on to action items. First up is the meeting room policy. And we had the first reading last month. Whoops, sorry, I'm in the wrong place. Um. And there was. An updated one was sent. Was the most recent one yesterday, Andrea?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, um, looks good, but please go ahead.
Yeah, it did make a few other changes, um, per some, uh, input from tack members. They had some really good ideas, several tack members use. Um, and one in particular uses the meeting rooms quite a lot and had some thoughts. Um, and they were very good suggestions, so I did include those in the policy. And a lot of them were really directed at making it, uh, protecting the library more, so I, I felt like those were really good additions to make.
Andrew, this is Andrew, and I just wondered, I noticed that you decided that you're not worried about the deposit. Uh, upfront.
The booking fee?
Booking fee, right, and I just wondered, um.
Define worried about, what do you mean by that? Cause it's still applicable to the rooms that, um, have a booking fee.
Okay, but wasn't there another fee? Or deposit that had to be made?
There was a deposit, like a cleaning deposit, I think, that was originally, um, required when, with the booking. Is that? Ring a bell with anybody?
There's a usage room, and so if I remember it, it's. The booking fee has to be paid before. Basically, Brett authorizes that, the official. You have it, uh, response back, but the actual payment, if there is any, for utilization of the room. Can, can take place after that. Um, but preferably, if you would like to have it before the, the event takes place, if I remember it. I just read it a couple hours ago, so.
Yeah, it's the third.
Fresh, top of my mind, there it is, booking fee, yep.
For weddings?
Well, it's the third bullet under changes of significance. Uh, Brett and I decided the payment for rooms did not have to happen in full. And, and I just wondered the logic of that, because if they don't pay in full ahead of time and then they cancel. And, you know, I, I'm just wondering, is that going to make a headache trying to chase them down?
No, so actually, it does the opposite of that, um, and what we were concerned about is what Rick was just alluding to. So if we take the booking fee, that's non-refundable, so we're, we're not chasing them down, we're not giving them any money back. If they cancel and, and are far enough ahead, we can help them to try and reschedule if that's a possibility. Um, but that, that fee is not refundable, um. But if they pay the full usage fee, you know, for, if they're like a nonprofit group and they're paying for several hours. Then we have to try and cut them a check if they cancel. Um, and we would prefer not to do that because it is a lot of bookkeeping on our end, we just don't have.
It's expensive.
Well, it totally makes sense, thank you.
I had a comment, um, just because I involved in a couple of the groups and, and there's been a big. Um, big push to not touch credit card information manually at all, um. You know, there's a PCI certification financially and you, and, and you always, and the check marks always have to say. We never take credit card information over the phone, you know, um, anyway, it's, it wouldn't have to hold a policy, but I think it's. Uh, maybe it's something you've already looked at, I guess that's a question, but if you haven't, it's something definitely to look up. I had it at Marissa, I had it with another group, I'm, a couple of groups I'm still involved with. And if we have to be really careful, anyway, we take credit card information. It's through a provider that, you know, is certified to do that, and we don't, we. I, I told the people, you might take one or two over the phone, never admit that you've taken credit card information over the phone because it'll. Um, it'll, you know, void our certifications that we made to our banks and, you know, other things like that, just something to check out.
Our PCI compliance, uh. We agree that we, we destroy all records that are handwritten, we don't keep.
Hold it, or, yeah. So it's okay for them, Bruce, if you take it manually over the phone?
Yeah, it's, it's not the norm, but normally we would have somebody on the phone reading it to you and you're typing it in. We do take it over the phone and we, they don't keep us from doing that, but they don't want us to write anything down.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Other questions? I guess, well, we actually needed a motion to talk.
Yeah. I can do a motion. This is Andrew, the Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the meeting. Room policy as presented, this policy becomes effective March sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, this is Patrick, I will second.
Okay, should have done that first, I'll get better at this.
Well, yeah, now discussion, right, so.
Yeah, now we'll discuss, I mean, we've been discussing, are there other questions or comments?
I guess, just out of curiosity, real quick, like, say another nonprofit or one of the usual organizations that utilizes. These spaces and would they typically pay via credit card, would they typically have? Um, you know, a check associated with the organization that they would give you? How much of this actual transfer of hand-to-hand stuff still happens?
I would say both happen regularly.
Yeah, depending on who it is, and, right.
Yeah, um, if it's an entity as opposed to a private individual, they're more likely to check. But I've had them use credit cards too. It just varies.
They kind of, yeah, you're just like, whatever works for you and, you know, make that work.
Probably accommodating anyway they want to give us their money, so. We'll take it.
Yeah, a, a check and card, they know, right, let me see. Thank you, Brett.
Any other questions or comments about the meeting room policy? Are we ready to vote?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote, Andrew.
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye, the meeting room policy is approved four zero. And now we have first readings of five different policies. And we're going to start with the computer and internet access and use policy. My first question is, I see like the meeting room policy is labeled LIB. And then the next five are MGT, and I don't know what those are.
Those are different sections in the policy manual.
Okay, thank you.
They'll be grouped together, the, um, computer policy is grouped together with other management policies.
Got it.
Yep, where the, um, meeting room policy is grouped with policies that are about use of the library facility itself. So that's why it, I had it labeled as use originally, and I got some feedback from staff that that was awkward. So I changed it to LIB instead.
Okay, thank you.
The future is acronyms, I, I get them all, myself.
Um, I did send Bruce a suggestion earlier today or yesterday, I don't know, under regulations, under one. A, that second sentence I found a little. Convoluted, so I asked him to clear that up for, you know, in the final read-through. So just so you know, that was the only thing that I saw, the rest of it, I thought, I mean, it's a really good policy, it feel, to me, it feels very comprehensive, covers a lot of. Covers a lot, which of course it needs to do.
You're right, yeah, that's, it is, it's got a wide scope, but there's a lot to cover.
There is, I know, people don't realize what happens in libraries with the internet access.
It's hard to keep it brief. The, there was another policy from the, from the home library that I did kind of use as a. Use as a template for this one and adapted it for for I felt to be more appropriate for our situation. This is another policy that. Get get stolen from somewhere.
Isn't, what is imitation is the sincerest form of flattery?
Especially in libraries, we don't try and steal as much as we can.
Right.
I thought it looked, this is Steve, I thought it looked really good, too comprehensive, I learned a lot in reading through it, that's for sure.
Yeah. I mean, it is for two to, so we're doing all this policy review, just as you join the board, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to know, right, and and yeah, there. I can't say I've witnessed all of these happen, certainly not at once, but. Probably plenty of it.
Yeah, it looks good to me, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just said, looks good to me.
Yeah, I like the revision, you know, thanks Bruce, and again, it's. You know, this is such a. Very wide ranging topic that, like you said, all your work just gets torn down in three years, so this will change in two. You're used to that by now, right?
Sorry.
Nope, go right ahead.
Andrea, the the attorney looked this over, right?
No.
Oh.
First reading, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I don't like to send things off to the attorney until you all have a first look at it.
Yeah, they they cost money, Andrew.
Yeah, I know, I just. I. They're gonna find, uh, they're gonna have a lot more, you know, expertise on this than I will.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Well, I think it sounds like we're all pretty happy with it, so.
Yeah, and let's see, let's see what comes back, you know?
Yep. So next up is the Internet for Patron Provided Equipment Policy. Have to look at this one again, I haven't looked at it today.
So this is the companion policy to the computer use policy. The use of private devices on the library's network.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, again, it's very straightforward, I, yeah, it looks good to me, I really, I didn't see anything that. Would need to be changed or that jumped out at me. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the Internet for Patron Provided Equipment Policy?
Fifteen cents a page, black and white, still still current going rate, as they say. Very good.
Currently suspended, but urging anything.
No, I. I don't think that's gonna be the revenue stream, Bruce, I'm just telling you, there's gotta be lower hanging fruit somewhere. Well, then maybe we just put it right toward the toner pool, for sure. I know a guy, I, he calls it ink, so he sells it cheaper, so it's good. I like that, I I like the policy too, I like that we make it clear there it's security is. Yeah. They're using their own device, if it gets infected or if someone is monitoring traffic, it's not the library's responsibility, I like that that's spelled out specifically.
Yep, that's very good.
And number seven, where where it says it's not the intent of the library, you referenced that Bruce, not the intent of the library to be a sole provider of internet access to those.
Right.
I did, I didn't set a hard threshold though, so it's kind of interpretation, it's hard to just like say, why you can only use this much. But hopefully we can enforce the spirit of the the policy.
I I like the spirit of the policy, and yes, you will always have those that. Don't quite have the same spirit, so. You know, anyway, there might be something to think about Bruce too, if, I mean, if that looks like a problem or just a strategy might be. You know, schedule, I don't know if it's scheduled, we'll schedule that off at midnight or something, you're probably not gonna have people in the parking lot after midnight. Doing work and then you might have people at home trying to watch Netflix or something, but anyway. Yeah, that would be a drag, you're right, Steve, hit him right in the middle of Game of Thrones.
Excited, I don't, I don't know if that's on that.
Okay, I think we've covered that one, confidentiality of library records.
So this one did come straight from the attorney, because I wanted to be sure that our. The policy that I was drafting, based off of another library's policy, which has been drafted prior to the change of the. Of the Library Privacy Act, I wanted to make sure that that was in compliance with the Libraries Policy Act and Ann sent me back. This full policy and said, you should just use this one, and I said, okay, okay, I just will, that sounds great. Um, and it.
Thank you for your expertise.
Exactly, um, the the Library Policy Act is not anything that we want to mess around with or be out of compliance with. And it does have all of the definitions from the Library Privacy Act itself. Which is very helpful in interpreting how to deal with it, so I did sit in on another webinar today about the Library Privacy Act. And there are a few things that the Library of Michigan and the. Michigan Library Association are trying to get adjusted, it's not within the act itself, it's actually related to the library retention schedule. Because of this change, libraries are required to carry sixty days worth of video footage. And there are a lot of libraries who can't do that with their current system, or financially it is difficult for them to do with their current system. Our current system does carry that much, in fact, we carry quite a bit more of a backlog than that. The downside to that is what I learned today is definitely going to be a part in the downside of this change. Is that all of that surveillance footage then is available to be FOIA'd. So we may want to consider not retaining as much video footage. Because if we get a FOIA request, then we have to spend time to go in and make sure that we're not showing library records. Within the video footage. And.
This is of minors.
A whole thing, so you may be having, look at how much video footage that we're retaining, because it is FOIAB.
Something too, so maybe that that would help an argument of that, having to do a lot of the.
Yeah.
Video is incredibly time consuming to look for.
It it really is, and it's for us, it's really applicable, like the day or so after something happens. If we're trying to go back and figure out who it was that did this thing on the third floor, you know, between. A two month date, you could spend your whole life trying to find footage of that and never actually find it. So it's really, even our good system is really only valuable when we have some other data to go on, you know, exactly. Or approximately within ten minutes or so, when was that person in what room? And how how might we find them on a video footage, because Bruce and I both have spent hours looking at video footage. To try and find things and.
That sounds so exciting.
It's really not. I can assure you, it is really.
No, I. I can't make it through actually a TV show, so yeah, I just, I don't.
And that has a storyline and people are.
That might be the stuff you're watching, but not mine.
Yeah, so Bruce and I haven't even talked about that, because that was a webinar I was in today, so that's for him to to think on overnight. But I, this does go into effect, the the new Library Privacy Act is going to affect at the end of the month, we do have time. After it goes into effect for our policy to be in effect, so we're still fine looking at, you know, final approval of this one in April. But I do think there are a few tweaks that we would, we will want to make to how much video we're retaining. Just so that we're not getting FOIA requested for, you know, every little, you know, infraction that somebody thinks that they've had within the building.
Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, but a a while back, didn't we have an incident where? The market police wanted us to turn over some information? And we were. We were, I don't want to use the word conflict, but we had. Kind of, we we were had concerns, I think that'd be the better word.
So what happened with that situation is. With the previous Library Privacy Act, it had been interpreted that library surveillance footage was in fact a library record. And we were not able to turn that over without a subpoena or court order. And we have turned over some footage for things that happened at the library. That was related to an issue we had with the patron, patron behavior, things like that. But this was about a robbery that happened across the street. And so they were hoping to catch footage of people going across the street on our cameras, and that's where it got real sticky, like. Can we actually turn this over? And our and our attorney was saying no, and the police department was getting very frustrated with me. And was kind of implying that I was trying to not be helpful, and it wasn't that I was trying not to be helpful, I was trying to. Obey the law and.
Not be sued, yeah.
We did end up getting an official request from them, but it was not pleasant, and it made our, I. You know, this is something that they brought up in the webinar today is unfortunately, you know, you you don't want to make your. Officers or your police department upset with you, because you want them to come to your library and address things when when you need them to be. There and on, you know, fighting for your for your side, so you know, it's kind of that fine line where we don't want to be. Just spewing information to them all the time, but we also need to be helpful and supportive of things happening in town. When the landmark was broken into, we did have some footage that was all, you know, that showed people outside. I don't know that it actually showed the person they were looking for, but you know, there are cameras that we have outside our building that could be helpful. To larger community police efforts and. I know some libraries are very against this, but I do think it's our obligation to try and be helpful if we can in those situations. But I also think we need to, in the spirit of protecting privacy, limit what we have access to, so that we're not. You know, spending an order, inordinate, inordinate amount of time trying to track down this and that. With our system, because that's also not really useful in the grand scheme of things, so trying to find that that middle ground and that balance.
Yeah. And but given that the attorney looked over that one policy, I don't have any comments, because I figured they're far more knowledgeable than I.
Yep.
Really, Andrew?
All right, well, that takes care of confidentiality of library records.
Really quick questions for Andrea.
Yeah.
I know any, this is in like fifteen years ago or something, that Patriot Act was fresh. If if a federal officer came and asked for records, you couldn't even, the employee they asked wasn't even allowed to tell anyone else at the agency, they. But that's all, that's changed.
Yes and no, the Patriot Act is definitely still in force. And one thing I didn't mention from the webinar today is the. Let me look for the wording, the personal recollection. And that is what staff can and cannot say to officers, and that has actually been broadened quite a bit. With several caveats, and so that's something that we need to work on clarifying for staff, because. There there is the ability for staff to share with police officers what's up here. Without looking on the computer screen and typing up a patron's record and looking for, you know, their checkout history and things like that. Those are absolutely no's, those are library records. But if an officer comes in and says, hey, we're trying to track down Andrea Ingmeyer. Because we think she broke into the landmark across the street. I know who Andrea Ingmeyer is. And could share that information with the police, whether or not we want them to is a whole other discussion. And that's one thing that came up in the webinar today that, you know, we have to pretty, we have to train our staff on how we want them to handle that. Because there is a certain level of liability that comes with staff talking to the police about things. And again, our staff wants to be helpful, so we've had situations where officers have come in asking about certain people. Staff know who they are, you know, and it, those lines get real fuzzy sometimes. When you're trying to be helpful, trying to share information, trying to help the cause, but we need to. To work on clarifying where those lines are for staff, because this this revision of the Library Privacy Act does open things up. A little bit. It also opens up liability specifically to the library as well as to the staff member. The previous Library Privacy Act was written so that if a staff member gave information, they could be directly sued, but the library couldn't be directly sued. And now the act says both entities can be directly sued, so. You know, there's a, there's a certain level of liability that. You know, I think is probably best to just say, don't say anything, talk to your supervisor before you talk to a police officer. Because I think it's gonna be important for us to have a larger discussion before information is shared, just so we're all aware of. You know, what the situation is, how important is it, you know, I mean, obviously, if we're if we're looking for a missing child. And we know that child comes into the library all the time, we're gonna bend over backwards to try and help if if. You know, there's just other situations where the risk may not be really worth it.
Right, just two quick follow ups, wanted, if this opens up liability, it might, you might have to relook at liability policies. Liability insurance policies, if this opens a whole new category of, I lost it anyway, just a thought. And also the FOIA, on the FOIA, isn't, is it, isn't it if if if, you know, John Q. Public came in and said, I want. Footage or papers or records or some, whatever would be legally allowed to be FOIA'd, aren't they allowed to be charged? Are you allowed to charge them for the time to put that together?
Yes, you are.
And you could just say, I estimate that's gonna take about five hours of video review time, it's gonna be at, you know, the salary, so.
Well, the other, the follow up question I asked today in the webinar that we didn't have time to get to, so I'll be emailing. The Library of Michigan is is, you know, if we retain video footage because of a specific incident, you know, let's say we have a patron. Who. Does damage some books, we're not necessarily pressing criminal charges against that patron, but we want to retain a video record of what happened. Is that specific video FOIAB, and the answer is yes. But my follow up question to that was, well, wouldn't they have to have the date that it happened and like have knowledge of? I'm looking for. On, you know, because if we're only keeping seven days, they're gonna have to know to ask for video footage on, you know, October tenth of twenty twenty. Versus seven days ago, so there's there's just a lot, and there always is with these with these issues. So we're just gonna, you know, continue to use our our due diligence and and make adjustments to what we need to keep and not keep. And, you know, you're bringing up the. The Patriot Act is, you know, thinking about only keeping seven days worth of video footage is very reminiscent of what happened after the Patriot Act. Because what libraries did when the Patriot Act came out is, we said, well, fine, our systems don't retain those records anymore, you can't even ask us. Because we don't have them, we don't know what people checked out. Because it was an issue of, they they could request it, and then what do you do when it's a library record? So just not having the records at all is much cleaner, it's much cleaner way to say, well, you can ask all you want, but this is all we've got. And what we did, you know, we don't have to give that to you because we don't have it.
Yeah.
So it will be interesting to see how this all plays out, but you know, since this is a brand new change, there's no, there's no legal history. That the attorneys can draw on, so they're, you know, advising caution and advising, you know, as best they can. But there's, there's not that body of legal work to back up. But there's, there's not that body of legal work to back up what they're saying, so even there-
Yeah, there's not much in the way of precedent.
Yeah.
Specifically to this, and-
Excellent.
Yeah.
Never thought a library director would have all this kind of law and order stuff thrown in there too. It's pretty cool. I should go back to school.
Yeah, well, that's how you define it, huh?
For the public record, yeah.
I'm waiting for Gamache. Where's Gamache?
Yeah.
Right around the corner.
You call Law &amp; Library.
Sometimes it feels like that.
I bet. I bet it does.
Yep. Other questions or comments about the confidentiality of library records? Okay, feels like we covered that pretty thoroughly. Uh, the records retention policy. I like this short little policy.
This is a short one.
You know, it's right to the point. It's okay.
Yep.
And it's, this is one of those policies that we just didn't have. Um, and so stating that we follow the records retention policy of the state. And, you know, describing a little bit of how long we keep library counts active. And then just referring everything else back to the confidentiality of library records policy. So, very simple. But again, it's just one of those little policies that we didn't have as part of our policy portfolio that we probably should.
So, if someone could avoid paying their, their overdue fines for three years, their ten, their nine dollars would be purged from the records?
Yep. And with their card, and they'd have to sign up all over again.
They'd get a good lecture. They'd get a good talking to, Steve, so.
Other questions or comments about the records retention policy? Hearing none, we'll move on to the security camera policy. This is a revision.
Yes, so this is a policy that we currently, are, we currently have. I did change the last two sections. Our, our previous policy ended at section six or VI with the surveillance footage. And I did add um, the record retention part to six, and then for seven, um, was just addressing the, um, let's get there, how, how those records are distributed. So, stating that um, they are following the confidentiality of, of, of library records policy. So, again, trying not to rewrite the same thing over and over in separate policies, but referring, you know, policies that work hand-in-hand, referring back to the bigger policies so that we don't have issues later on. Hopefully, where um, policy is outdated in one place and not another. So, trying to, trying to keep that from happening. But also letting folks know what, what they can and cannot do with, uh, as far as records go.
Yeah, it looked good to me. They're, they're good revisions.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Steve, you're muted.
I keep jumping back to my Acrobat reader so I can look at the full policy and scroll up and down. So, just because it's security cameras and I'm thinking of now if, if someone came in and their car had been dented in a parking lot, would we, would, would that be something you guys would? I mean, you'd have to get the police to ask for it though, or I mean, if I said someone backed into my car, can you see who did it to me?
Um, I, that's a good question. I'm not sure if we could tell you who hit your car, but we could certainly um, provide that to the police.
Okay.
As, to assist with that, we have done that in the past.
Okay.
Um, even um, because if your car gets hit in the parking lot, it's pretty frustrating. We've had cars actually just kind of roll on their own. I don't remember exactly the, the situation that happens. Bruce probably has a better memory of that one. A car just started rolling across the parking lot.
It hit my car.
It hit your car, that's great. So, of course you remember it.
It didn't do any damage though. It was in, it left, it popped in the reverse and it, yeah, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I, but again, I don't know that we could just give that to a person who came in and asked for it. I think officially that would have to be a FOIA, but we could look on this, on the system and see, oh, we do have footage of that. So, it would be good to request it, or do you want us to call the police to come over?
Yeah.
Look at it, or, you know, how-
Get that into the police report.
Yeah. Um, but I, we certainly, you know, we've had patrons be like, oh, I'll just come behind the desk and look at the camera system with you. Nope, you're not going. You're not going to do that. Um, but the parking lot camera is actually, you know, very helpful uh, in that regard. We can tell you where not to park too, where this, the camera-
Where Bruce parked, yeah.
Exactly.
You have such a small car too. How did it choose to work?
All right. Anything else on the first readings of the policies? Thanks for all your hard work. This, I know this is a lot of work and uh, it's, we appreciate it.
Problem. It's important.
It is important. It, it makes my little OCD heart happy that we're putting this all in one place.
Yeah.
There we are.
Well, well, next month, we have a couple of big ones. Um, we, we really desperately need an employee manual. Um, and I was hoping to have that ready for this meeting, but I just haven't been able to string enough hours together to really go through and give it the review it needs. So, um, I'm hoping it'll be ready for next meeting. If not, it'll definitely be the May meeting. But we, we don't have an employee personnel manual that requires people to sign off that they're going to behave professionally in the library. And strangely, that's really important from a legal perspective.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we need to have that. Um, and my preference is to get that done sooner rather than later. Um, but I also don't want to put out a policy that is that's just not good. Um, or, you know, doesn't really fit with, with our, with our, with our u- unique staffing relationship, you know? Having a union, two unions, actually having administrative staff and then having um, staff who are not a part of a union, but they're not also not administration. We just have a lot of moving parts. And so, making sure a personnel manual works within all of the existing framework is pretty important. So, um, that one may take me a little more time than, I'm hoping it does, but fingers crossed for April. Um, and then after that, we've got circulation coming, um, coming right up. Amy's been working on the circulation policies. So, there's, there's a lot of people involved in this. It's not all me. We have a lot of staff who are very invested in making sure our policies are, are up to date and, and reviewed, so.
Well, it makes the whole institution stronger, and I'm, I'm grateful.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right, do we have any public comment at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to old business. We didn't have any listed on the agenda, so I'm going to assume we don't have any. Under new business, we have the trustee manual, chapter two, which is the bylaws. Which is, now there is exciting reading. And an exciting topic. But uh, as I think I mentioned to you, I did send, I didn't get it done until yesterday, but you know, this is the way my life works right now. So, our existing bylaws have not been revised since 2014. So, it's, it's been a minute. Um, and I know Andrea has sent them to our attorney and she made some comments and sent them back, which Andrea has shared with me. Um, and I'm happy to go ahead and make those revisions and work with Andrea before our next meeting to try to get the, get some suggestions and changes, you know, just get them updated. I mean, it's a good idea to review them every few years and, I mean, seven years seems like a good, good amount. So, it's nice that this has prompted that. But does anybody have any questions about the, what the trustee manual had to say about bylaws and the board organization?
Well, you know, I finally, for the first time, read what a secretary on the board's supposed to do, and I think I've been kind of negligent. I don't, I think Brett's doing most of what, uh, what it says I'm supposed to do, so thank you, Brett.
I didn't read it that way, but, but you and Brett can work that out.
Oh, we've got, yeah.
That's very normal for boards.
Is it? Okay, good, because I was like, oh, I've never, I don't even know how you spell that. I don't know. Okay, good. Uh, in, like, has there, is staff input been in, included in the bylaws, or obviously you're, you know, sort of taking Anne's recommendations and Cernix's recommendations and whatever? And, I mean, before you put a recommendation to us, or there's going to be other eyes on it too, or does that not, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I figured.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, well, next month, we'll do chapter three, which I have no idea what it is, but I'm-
Can't wait.
Can't wait, exactly.
And I, I have a question. I'm just looking at um, part of this one. Indemnity, liability indemnification, is there, is there, there is an emissions insurance? I mean, we don't make, we make decisions as a board, but is there, is there, there is insurance here, you know, insurance?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yes, we do. Yep.
All right, moving on to standing reports. I didn't see any correspondence this month.
You know, that's a question that I have, and I don't, I don't know how much you, you all want to see. So much of correspondence takes place via email. Um, and not informal letters written between the library and, and folks. So, I, I always, you know, when Brett and I are putting the board packets together, do, I, I don't know, what kind of information do you want to see in correspondence?
I only want to see letters that say they love us.
Okay.
And then if they really are on the opposite end, that would be great to read just because I love fiction. I think I'm good. Um, yeah, and obviously any written correspondence, right? Hope some, it should be included for, uh, but yeah, I, unless, do you want me to share all the emails I get? Because like, they're, I wouldn't, I, I don't think you want to. I don't even want to read them the first time, so.
Yeah, no, in seriousness, I think, I mean, I trust your judgment, Andrea, and you've always included things that we needed to see. And, you know, it's, if there's a specific issue that someone has raised that, you know, we need to address through a policy, or, you know, it's, or you're stymied by it and you need advice, you know? I mean, those are the situations, in my opinion, that are things we would want to see. That's what I would want to see, I should say. I don't want to speak for-
I almost included this, this little note that came in the donation. But it had some personal bearing, and I felt like that was inappropriate to put in a public document.
Absolutely.
But it came from a person who lost a book and um, sent a copy of the book plus a donation to the library. But, but this person shared that um, they had cancer and had been going through a lot of treatment and, um, but it's such a lovely little note. Um, I, I would do want to read this last little sentence because I think this is, this is kind of some of the joy of working in a library that we, um, that we don't often get to share. But, so, while not an excuse, it may provide some clarity about, about why it did, uh, why it got lost. I had multiple tests, surgery, doctor appointments, and during that initial craziness, I lost the book. I do believe I'm a mindful, responsible library patron, so I'm deeply sorry for what happened. I thank you in advance for your understanding. So, this is not always what we see when patrons lose books. A lot of times, we fight with them and we, you know, have to have all this back and forth. And yet, this woman, or person who had just been through all of this really awful trauma had just wrote, wrote this beautiful little card and sent us a copy of the book and, and a, and a donation as well. So, you know, those are the, those are the library patrons that always just kind of, this is why we're doing this, right? Okay. Um, and anyway, I just thought I'd share, but it's one of those things I didn't really feel like I could include in, in correspondence because there was some personal information there and her name, things like that, so. So, some of those, uh, it's just uh, hard to decide whether or not to include. Um, but I will continue to do so as appropriate.
Thank you.
Thanks to Andrea.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
To receive Patrick's emails.
Okay, I'm sending them to, I get, you want, I got work and personal, and actually, I got, you asked for it, buddy.
I'm trying to remember what else I saw in the reports. I promise I read all of them in detail.
Good stuff.
But it was three days ago.
Services, per usual.
Yep. Oh, wait, we have to finish by seven because I want to see the knockabouts.
All right.
I don't know where you're at now, but-
Okay, are there questions or comments about standing reports?
None from me. This is Patrick.
Motion to adjourn.
That would be-
Do, do I have a second?
Uh, this is Patrick. I have a second.
Is there any discussion about adjournment? Are we ready?
I, I mean, I'm ready. It should happen quickly. That's what I think.
Okay.
I want to support Anne's viewing needs.
Thank you.
Exactly. I mean, this is art here. What am I to get in the way of art?
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Andrew, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
This is Anne. I also vote aye. Meeting is adjourned at 6:57.